Regular meeting number 16 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
......................................................
Let us pray. Oh, good and gracious God, the members of Columbus City Council meet once again to address the business of our city. This coming week is a special one for both Jewish and Christian people. Our Jewish brothers and sisters will celebrate Passover, and our Christian brothers and sisters observe Holy Week and Easter. May we all come to appreciate the message of these great celebrations, the message that God is with us always, faithful to His promises, and delivers us from slavery and from death to life. As the season of springtime continues and nature awakens and the songbirds return, help us to appreciate the glories of nature, the result of Your loving and creative hand. May we value and protect Your creation, and join together to make our city, our state, our nation, and world a better place for all to live. May we live in peace, in hope, and in confidence that You are always with us, that You prosper the work of our hands, and that You never allow us to face our troubles alone. May we trust in Your providence and continued presence among us. We ask Your special blessing on Fire Chief Greg Paxton, who is moving toward retirement. May he have Your blessings, a happy retirement, and the richest blessings for his family all the days of his life. Amen.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Harden? Councilmember Klein?
Yes, Council President. I have one resolution tonight, and I'd like to invite Fire Chief Greg Paxton. Fire Chief Greg Paxton. Oh, there he is. He says, "Still working hard." You know why he comes up? I'm not a stickler for reading resolutions, but I am going to read one clause of the resolution that I think encapsulates his history and tenure. As the fire chief, Paxton began his distinguished service to the Columbus Division of Fire in March of 1981. Paxton worked a number of different engine and ladder assignments, as well as paramedic assignments, before being promoted to lieutenant in 1988. The chief's exemplary service led to a series of promotion: '91 to captain, battalion chief in '94, and deputy chief in 2000, assistant chief in 2002. As assistant chief, he served as the city's chief fire marshal, the chief of the training bureau, and as the executive officer, second-in-command to the Division of Fire. And he was appointed chief June 6, 2012. Congratulations, sir. The floor is yours.
Thanks so much. It's been quite a while, I guess, 34 years, being a firefighter, but it's been just a wonderful career. You know, as public servants yourselves, that really there is no greater service than to serve others in your community, and I feel that's what the Division of Fire is known for. I've been privileged enough to actually become the 23rd fire chief in a 157-year history. I'm very honored by that. I am very proud of the firefighters you see behind me somewhere.
Why don't you all stand up back there, the men and women of fire? Let's give them a round of applause.
Because they're the people really doing all the good work. You know, they make me look good, and I thank them for that. And I feel that the division, the city, the entire central Ohio region, is in good hands because of people like this. So, once again, I would like to say thank you. It went quickly, and I had a blast.
Chief, 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 please come back. Councilmember Paley.
I know Chief Paxton is like holding his breath, because I believe out of all the people up here, I've known him the longest, over two decades now, I believe. And you were a great firefighter and a great example to the city then, and you are even better today. I want to thank you for the service that you've given to the city of Columbus and to the community, because you're out and about a lot. I see you. And I also want to thank Jack Reel for coming here to recognize your service also.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? President Protem Mills.
Happy retirement, Chief Paxton. I just wanted to share, you and I have shared a few stages together at graduations and promotions, and found time to communicate onstage, you know, sometimes, and I would be impressed with some of the accomplishments of the class, and you would always say, and give credit to the training staff and the training academy, and I always say, "You should be so proud," and say, "Well, it wasn't me, it was the other folks who were training them." And so, I love the way that you always give credit, as you did just tonight, to everyone who makes sure that we're safe at night, and also taking humbly, as a chief, the duties very, very seriously. So, I appreciate that about you, and happy retirement.
Well, thank you, and I would like to thank you for your support for the boot camps. Remember those?
Yes.
I hope those continue, I hope we continue to attract diverse people for the Division of Fire and police. Once again, you know, this is...
Please.
You know, it's been really a great privilege, something I'll think about when I'm down there in the Caribbean somewhere. Thinking about you guys for a short time.
Councilmember Harden?
Chief, I just want to say again, thank you. When I see you here, and when I've always seen you, I think back to two years ago when I was still in the mayor's office, and we worked on that education video. And you went out with the kids and did the mayor's rap video, and you had the best moves out of anybody in the music video. So, that's one of the many ways that I remember Chief Paxton. So, thank you for that. I think it shows your engagement and your commitment to our community, and I really appreciate it, and thank you.
You're welcome. I thought everyone had forgotten that one. Thank you.
He's on the cover of the Command Post, which is the Division of Fire's GQ equivalent, starring Chief Paxton, but it says, "Firefighting has a rhythm, recruits run in a cadence, and train with metr... I don't even know what that word is. Metremo, like precision towards a common goal, to become a city of Columbus firefighter, but a select few become chief." And that's you. So, at this time, I'd like 76X 2015 to recognize Chief Paxton in honor of his 34 years of distinguished service with the Columbus Division of Fire.
Sir, move in second. Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
But before you leave, I'd like to recognize the Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Chief Paxton, thank you. On behalf of a grateful city for your decades of service protecting life and property, you have made significant contributions in a very short period of time as chief, but have made great contributions to families, to this community, for years and years. And you have a legacy of service and one of sacrifice, and on behalf of a grateful city, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. President Protem Mills?
I don't have a resolution this evening, but I did have a couple of comments I'd like to share. I just wanted to take this moment to discuss the decision made by the Indiana legislators to codify discrimination last week by passing a law that will allow business owners to use religion to treat individuals differently and to refuse service to those individuals. The language of this bill does not identify any specific group of people, although it is certain that the bill will be used to discriminate against members of the LGBT community, and it could, however, be used against a person of a certain faith, creed, or ethnicity. Having faced the challenges associated with being a minority, I know there is a need for equality and inclusion in every aspect of our lives, regardless of gender, race, creed, class, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And I am certainly thankful today that Columbus prides itself on being a smart and open city. Our residents all come from a very different backgrounds and paths of life, but they certainly make our city diverse, unique, and very special. Our businesses thrive because of the diversity and the creativity of all the members in our community, and the Columbus City Council passing LGBT protections in Chapter 2331 of Columbus City Code to keep Columbus smart and open. We don't stand for discrimination at any level, which is why we continue to refine Chapter 2331. And as the Chair of the Department of Development, I want the business and conventions of Indiana to know that you are looking for an inclusive city, look no further than the city of Columbus. I am proud of the city we have and happy to be part of it. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Protem Mills. Or Councilmember Page, any comments or resolutions? Councilmember Paley?
For those of you who don't know, there's always been, and I'm kind of, Councilmember Tyson's not here to defend herself, but there's been a little rivalry between Walnut Ridge and Eastmore up here, and I was so excited when Walnut Ridge Scots was in the semifinals, but so was Eastmore, so I just want to congratulate both Eastmore and Walnut Ridge for being in the semifinals, and they did a great job representing the city of Columbus.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Any announcements or comments from our elected officials? City Attorney? Judge Barrows, any comments, or Judge Tyack, any comments from the court? Okay, welcome. Good to see you all tonight. This time, I request the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. The Development Committee 0789-2015 be removed from consent. Any other requests from members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? If not, may we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Technology Committee ordinance is 751 and 780-2015. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 524, 577, 622, 627, 635, 660, 663, 681, 717, 739, 744, 752, 763, 764-2015. Development Committee ordinance is 831 and 832-2015.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 84X-2015. Finance Committee ordinance is 609, 782, 801, and 818-2015. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 74X-2015. Ordinance is 257, 582, 724, 759, 790, 792, and 793-2015. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 569, 768, and 822-2015. Technology Committee ordinance 750-2015. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 276, 461, 605, and 656-2015. Development Committee ordinance is 777, 779, 781, 785, 803, 804, 805, 806, 827, 834, 836, 837, 849, and 850-2015. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 760, 796, 815-2015. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance is 774, 775, 797, and 813-2015. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0011 and A0055-2015.
We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you would come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. You've signed up to speak in support of, I think it's 0849-2015.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of solely vacant and abandoned property. I wanted to talk to you about 1457 at Genesee Avenue. It's a eye nuisance in that community. It brings trash, high weeds every year to that property. Even that property has been vacant and abandoned for several years. I would just ask for it not to be sold to a property owner, because it's this eye scene over there on Genesee Avenue. There's other properties that are around that property that sits vacant and abandoned. There's five of them in that row where that house sits today. And again, I would ask for something to be done with this property, not to be sold, to be torn down. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any comments or questions for Mr. Wilkins? Director Shoney, any additional information you want to offer regarding 0849-2015 tonight?
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. That property is going to be sold to a private landowner for redevelopment as a rental property, as with all of our land bank transfers. We do have covenants in our D transfer that if the property is not properly rehabbed and then maintained, we do have rights to take the property back.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda this evening? Now, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk call the roll.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. President Protem Mills will be bringing forth legislation for consideration this evening.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Finance, I have ordinance 0798-2015 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to modify and extend certain contracts on behalf of the Facilities Management Division to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of Columbus City Code, to authorize expenditure of $50,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize expenditure of $171,000 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Facilities Management Division contracts for preventive maintenance, repair, and construction-type services to maintain city buildings and facilities. The Division has by necessity used a construction bid template to procure these services, even though they are not construction in the strict sense. However, recent changes of the city codes pertaining to the procurement of construction services and the requisite subsequent changes to the construction bidding template require bidder prequalification. Therefore, the current code definition of construction and the new bidding template are not appropriate to procure the aforementioned described hybrid-type services. A new definition of construction and updated appropriate bidding templates which recognize these types of services are in the works. In the interim, though, it is necessary to extend these contracts for one year. None of the vendors listed in this legislation have remaining renewal extensions available. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
That's all I have to present in Finance.
Thank you, President Protem Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 0644 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with the Strausser Paving Company, Inc., in connection with the resurfacing program, and to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $12,019,918 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $12,019,918 within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize expenditure of $12,019,918 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a key piece of the capital budget which we passed last week. This ordinance in particular will authorize Phase 1 of the city's $33 million resurfacing and paving. Phase 1 comes to us with a total price tag of just over $12 million, and will repair, resurface 109 city streets, and install 688 curbs and sidewalks to ensure that they are ADA compliant. If there are no comments, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have 0773-2015 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds from the Information and Service Capital Improvements Fund and the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, and to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $9,386,521.51 within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Guttenkamp Corporation for construction of the Columbus Traffic Signal System, Phase C project for the Department of Public Service, and to authorize the expenditure of $9,386,521.51 from the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, and to declare an emergency. And if there are no questions, I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That's all we have in Public Service and Transportation this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Next committee is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. The first in public safety is 0102-2015 to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order for the Division of Fire for turnout gear from an existing universal term contract with Morning Pride Manufacturing, to authorize the expenditure of $250,000 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. I think this ordinance really strikes at home here with the recent loss of a Cincinnati firefighter who died in the line of duty a few days ago, and just how important it is for the city of Columbus to be expending the necessary resources for our men and women of fire as they gear up to tackle a fire when we're running out of the building, because our house or our building's on fire and they're running in. It's important for us, really, the most important duty I think we have, and we owe it to public safety personnel, is to ensure that they're trained and that they have the gear necessary to protect themselves so that they can return home to their family. And with this expenditure, we put our money where our mouth is, and we give them the gear that's necessary to do exactly that. So, any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Moving to technology. 555, pardon me, 2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into contracts with various contractors and vendors to provide services to restore the city's secondary data center to full operations, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $80,000 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council. While a vendor was in testing our secondary data system, the fire suppression system, they inadvertently discharged it, and it needed to be recharged, and there's some cleaning that needs to be associated with that as well. So, that is why we have this legislation before you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
758-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Columbus Public Health Department to continue an annual agreement with Streamline Health, Inc., to continue providing the services for a vendor-hosted vital records management system, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and authorize an expenditure of $85,705.46 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund. Deputy Director.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council. The Streamline Health has been hosting the vital records for death certificates and birth certificates for the city's health department for over a decade now. At this time, we're moving forward with having them continue to host these electronic records. I think it would be fiscally irresponsible to try to move away from that platform and move it to another platform, another hosted solution at this time.
So, you're saying it's cost prohibitive to consider another server?
Yes, actually, right now, it's publicly hosted, public-facing environment, and right now, they're using it to host all those electronic records and the workflows that are associated with that. So, you know, it's been 11 years, I believe, right now, they've been hosting that system with a lot of success. So, at this time, we appreciate your support for that legislation.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for the Department of Technology on this piece of legislation? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Moving on to utilities. 211-2015 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with U.S. Utility Contractor Company for Nationwide Boulevard Division of Power Duct and Manhole System Project for the Division of Power, authorize the transfer of $2,104,448.94 to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget, to authorize the expenditure of $2,104,448.94 and to declare an emergency. Director.
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, this is a continuation of our collaboration with the Public Service Department, as well as Nationwide Realty Investors, to continue redeveloping the arena district. Specifically, this provides funds for us to bury our overhead electric wires into an underground duct on Nationwide Boulevard.
Any questions or comments for the Director? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
541-2015 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to pay the state of Ohio Treasurer Department of Natural Resources for operation and maintenance services and water entitlement of withdrawing water from the Allen Creek Reservoir for the Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,234,575.77. I think as the ordinance states, it's for withdrawing water from the Allen Creek Reservoir. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
636-2015 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a modification of the Utility Cut and Restoration Project Contract with Decker for the Division of Water, Division of Power, Division of Sewage and Drainage, to authorize the expenditure of $950,000 from the Water Operating Fund, $50,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund, and $435,000 from the Sewer Systems Operating Fund. Director Davies.
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, whenever we're working on a water sewer line in the public right of way, obviously, we're going to disrupt pavement, curbs, sidewalks, and this contract allows this company to go in after our work is done and restore those items that I mentioned back to its original state.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
And the final piece in Public Utilities is 659-2015 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification for the Professional Construction Management Services Agreement with URS for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $6,090,000 within the Water Works and in expenditure of up to $6,090,000 within the Water Works enlargement voted Bonds Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. Last time, Director.
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council. This is our large water projects, all three of our water plants are up ground reservoir. We contracted with URS and a lot of their subs to actually manage all of our projects for. So the period is from 2011 through 2017, excuse me, and this is just a continuation of that.
Okay. I move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Protem Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in development, I have the following ordinance, beginning with ordinance 0649-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a Columbus Downtown Office Incentive Agreement with Lexington Corporation as provided in Columbus City Council Resolution 0088X-2007 adopted June 4, 2007. Lexington Corporation is a research and design consulting services firm dedicated to informing and inspiring design through a deep understanding of people, their experiences, and their aspirations. The company serves Fortune 500 companies in the U.S. and across the globe, and was named the 2012 Fast 50 List of the fastest growing private companies in central Ohio by Columbus Business First. Lexington Corporation is proposing to expand its corporate headquarters by investing approximately $865,000 in leasehold improvements, machinery, equipment, standalone computers, furniture, and fixtures into a newly constructed Class A office space consisting of roughly 13,000 square feet located in a Columbus downtown business district. In addition to the leasehold improvements, the company will create 40 new full-time permanent positions with an annual payroll of approximately $2.72 million, and retain 45 full-time jobs with an annual payroll of approximately $3.47 million to meet its increased consumer demands. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0722-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a Columbus Downtown Office Incentive Agreement with Ringside Search Partners and Ringside Tempps LLC doing business as Ringside Staffing LLC as provided in Columbus City Council Resolution 0088X-2007 adopted June 4, 2007. Ringside assists its clients using a group of experienced search consultants, each of whom works closely with clients and candidates considering new positions. Ringside Search Partners and Ringside Tempps LLC are proposing to expand their corporate headquarters to a new area of downtown Columbus by investing approximately $500,000 in improvements, which includes inventory, furniture, and fixtures. The company will retain 14 full-time permanent positions with an associated annual payroll of approximately $603,000. In addition, the company will enter into a long-term lease agreement at 266 North Fourth Street in downtown Columbus and create 32 new full-time permanent positions with an annual payroll of approximately $1.56 million. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0828-2015 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $228,413.73 within the General Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $57,103.43 in cash from the Special Improvement Tax Fund to the General Fund, to authorize and direct the payment of $228,413.73 to the Gehanna Jefferson School District to compensate for real property tax revenues foregone as a result of CRA tax abatements and the Stelter Steigler CRA, to authorize expenditure of $228,413.70 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to offer Auditor Dory any comments he'd like to make on this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Chairperson Mills and all council. This is pretty much of an annual ordinance to share revenues the city of Columbus receives from annexation programs and so forth with the respective school district, in this case, Gehanna Jefferson.
Thank you, Auditor Dory. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0829-2015 to amend the downtown office incentive agreement with Jenny Splendid Ice Creams LLC for the purpose of changing incentive term and to declare an emergency. The need exists to amend the downtown office incentive agreement, and the agreement was made and entered into on September 30, 2014. The Department of Development has communicated both in writing as of October 6, 2014, to Jenny stating that the company's lease is not required seven years in length in order to receive a five-year department office incentive. Therefore, a downtown office incentive, I'm sorry. Therefore, an amendment is now required to change the term from five years to three years with the option to increase the term by two years should Jenny's exercise its lease renewal. I'd like to offer Director Shoney to offer comments regarding this particular ordinance.
Thank you, President Protem Mills, President Ginther, members of council. Our policy on our downtown office incentive is that the term of our agreements is the term of the lease minus two years to a maximum of five years. As we were negotiating the incentive with Jenny's, we had thought it was going to be a seven-year term on the lease. They did their lease negotiations, it ended up being five years. We need to, we needed to adjust back. Our anticipation and Jenny's anticipation is that they will be extending that lease at some point, so we will probably be back to council to re-extend the term of this. However, given where they are today with their lease term, this is adjusting it to the parameters of our program.
Thank you, Director Shoney. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0833-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to release the recorded mortgage interest of the city of Columbus on loans made through the Home Fund and Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Fund, for the YWCA Residential Limited Partnership, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to ask Ryan Castle as well as Elfi DeBella of the YWCA to please approach the This legislation releases and forgives the recorded mortgage interest and restrictions. Two loans were made with the funds from the Home Investment Partnership Program and one with the Community Development Block Grant. These loans were made in February 1995 to the YWCA for renovation of single-room occupancy units and facilities for low-income women. The 20-year term has now expired. Today, the historic Griswold Building in downtown Columbus is home to low-income women at any given time, many who are beginning their first jobs, recovering from drug-related, alcohol-related, and/or mental illnesses, or pursuing their education. I'd like to offer Ryan opportunity to share comments related to this as well as President DeBella for the YWCA. Mr. Castle.
Council President Ginther, Council President Protem Mills, and City Council, thank you for this opportunity to discuss our request for debt forgiveness. As you know, the Griswold Building is at 65 South Fourth Street. It's a landmark in our community and has been the headquarters for the YWCA since 1929. It has also been providing housing, affordable housing to women and for, since 1994, when the original renovation was contemplated. At that time, they used tax credits as well as $1.7 million of city debt to fund renovation and open its doors to 69 Rebuilding Lives women who are homeless, chronically homeless, and 33 low-income residents, also women. Because of the tax credit financing that was used, it was structured as a loan, your, the city's funding was structured as three different loans, and since that time, those loans have grown to approximately $2.5 million. As is typical for such projects, the loans were structured to be repaid out of cash flow, and as is typical for permanent supportive housing, there really wasn't any cash flow. So as a result, the loans have grown to the $2.5 million. We are here to ask for forgiveness of all $2.5 million. We want to point out a couple of important things that we're doing to reposition the Griswold to go forward. We have applied for and received funding for low-income housing tax credits and federal historic tax credits and state historic tax credits that will generate $13 million of a $15 million renovation plan. In addition to that, we'll be receiving private and public funding to help complete that project. With that project, we'll be converting 102 SOR units, single-room occupancy units, that are essentially dorm-like living. You don't have private bath, you don't have private kitchen. We'll be converting those to 91 units, 37 efficiency apartments, and 54 one-bedroom apartments, each with private bath and private kitchen, so that the YWCA's residents can benefit from the additional privacy, which we think will also help them in terms of preparing for, you know, their lives outside of the Y should they move on in the future. You know, obviously, this reinvestment will bring jobs to the city in terms of construction. It will also bring jobs in terms of the ongoing operations of the YWCA. We think that's important to note. We also will increase the number of individuals who will be homeless at the project after the renovation. So today, that's 69 homeless women. Once the renovation is complete and residents move back in, the YWCA will commit to 91 of the residents being homeless. And that increase in the number of homeless, which would be 100% of all units, is one of the reasons why Community Shelter Board and Rebuilding Lives Funder Collaborative gave the YWCA the number-one priority in 2014 for their funding. So it's important right now at this time to note that in our shelters, we've seen an increase in the number of women who are being served. Community Shelter Board reported in 2010 that there were 375 women that were in the shelter system, and fiscal year 2015, that number went up by 59%, so up to 595 individuals. So it's important that we address this challenge in terms of our community with additional permanent supportive housing units. And permanent supportive housing is an important part of the solution to homelessness in our community. While shelters are critical and have positive outcomes at a rate of 33%, permanent supportive housing has positive outcomes at 97%. So it's a critical component to addressing homelessness in our community. So we think that's another important aspect to point out as to why we need to move forward with providing permanent supportive housing at the Griswold. And finally, I would like to point out that the YWCA is going to commit to providing this housing going forward for another 30 years. So this is a significant commitment on their part, and we thank you for your consideration. Elfi, do you have?
President DeBella, if you could share with the listening audience, and I believe I understand this correctly, that close to 90% of the women living in the Griswold Building are moved into permanent housing, and that's an astonishing and great number as we continue to tackle homelessness in our community. And also, can you speak to the fundraising, or is it Mr. Castle to speak to the fact that investors raised near the $15 million necessary for renovation, if I have that correctly, needed to complete the renovation for the building?
Yes, it's a combination of $15 million thereabout for the residential component, and then additional $5.5 million for the restacking of the building, so we can still have the administrative component in the basement and below. The funding component has gone very successfully. In addition to our philanthropic fundraising, we have received the OFA LI-Tech tax credits, approximately $9 million thereabout, and the state and federal historic tax credits between about $3 to $4 million altogether. Also, $1 million Federal Home Loan Bank from Home Loan Bank in Cincinnati and other funders have stopped up as well. This is a critical program, and you're absolutely right. The women who are, that we are serving, 90 to 95% of them, will move on to their own independent living, and within average length of stays, about two years with us, and we help them overcome any barriers that they may have, whether it's getting a GED, or whether it's getting a job, or just coping with their, with their issues, and it's a 24/7. And it's a critical program, and we're actually bringing two additional rebuilding life units to this community, community for the chronically homeless women in our community.
And I'm going to ask Director Shoney to possibly respond to this question and share, as you know, we've, we've had discussions about the loan forgiveness is really based on the need for a debt picture for, related to the tax credits. Can you share a little bit about that, Director Shoney, please?
Yes, thank you, President Protem, President Ginther, members of council. The reason for us to request the debt forgiveness and to support this ordinance is because getting this debt cleared off the books for the Y is critical to being able to move forward on the new investment in these units at the Y. If we don't do this, we'll put the tax credit financing that President DeBella just discussed, it'll put all that at risk, it'll put the entire financing package at risk. One other thing, just to clarify, this is forgiveness of a loan that was made back in '94, '95. This is not the expenditure of new money on this project.
Thank you, Director Shoney, and I want to thank you, President DeBella, for all your hard work. I know that the additional services that you provide to the women, regardless of their stages of where they are in terms of getting themselves back on their feet, really make a difference, and I know that you and your staff contribute to that 90% as a Y, women are empowered and ready to move into permanent housing, and so I want to thank you for all your work, and thank you, Mr. Castle, for your education on this project as we've moved forward, and I really appreciate your support, and I could tell you really believe in the work of the Griswold Building, and it's come through loud and clear. So thank you both. I want to also share that the wellness and recovery support, the housing, all of that is absolutely what we need in the mission and the efforts of the YWCA to provide the affordable housing to women at all stages in their life is absolutely critical, and for that reason, I certainly ask my councilmembers for their consideration. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Paley.
President DeBella, I just want to thank you for all your hard work, and with the YWCA, it's, it's very important to the city of Columbus that people like you are part of the solution and not part of the system. We're pretty well-known nationally for our homelessness issues and the way that we attack them, and it's because of the YWCA and the Shelter Board and all of our partners, the collaboration and the partnership among yourselves. Thank you for what you do.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, I'd like to move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0839-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with various contractors to provide lawn care service on city-owned property held in the land bank, to authorize expenditure of $250,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund, to waive the relevant provisions of Chapter 329 of the City Code relating to competitive bidding, and to declare an emergency. Eleven companies responded to an invitation to bid, and the following companies include Motivation Lawn Services, Yads Construction, Ibar Home Maintenance, Trucko, Empower, Shining Company, and Culver Property Preservation. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Hardin Klein Mills Page Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0844-2015 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County to facilitate the production of affordable housing and enhance homeownership opportunities in Columbus, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of 0.43%, presently estimated at $1.5 million of the combined rates of 5.1% of the hotel motel excise tax, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to ask Steve Gladman, President of the Affordable Housing Trust, to approach the podium. The Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County combines public and private funding through a variety of sources to support the development of housing within the city. Both rental units and homeownership projects
Both rental units and homeownership projects are developed. Director Gladman, good to see you. Could you please share some comments related to this ordinance?
Yes, it'd be my pleasure, President Ginther, President Protam Mills, members of council. First, thank you for your, on behalf of the trust board, thank you for the past support and for your consideration tonight. The trust is a nonprofit corporation that was started through a recommendation that was made by a housing study in the first year of Mayor Coleman's first administration. And the recommendation was to create a housing trust fund that would serve as a loan source for affordable housing, that had a permanent source of financing, a permanent income source, and that's through the bed tax. And council went ahead and passed that to provide us this income stream. And then the county, who's also a funder, uses real estate transfer fees to support it as well. What we do is provide, work to act as a microbank, and we provide loans to affordable housing developers for a variety of projects, as you indicated. One is where the Griswold Building, we have a $2 million loan with that, which is not a cash flow loan. But we are in a variety of projects. And last year, we made $18.6 million of loan commitments, which will result in $115 million of affordable housing being produced when it's fully built. And that's about 935 units for the last year. We provide housing to people that have some of our greatest needs in our community, but we also have an economic development impact because of the production and the preservation of that housing. So each year, we ask Dr. Bill Lafayette to do an analysis for us about what's the total economic impact and what's the jobs impact for the funds that we commit. So based just on last year, his analysis shows that the total job impact, that's the direct jobs from the construction, the management, the indirect jobs from the suppliers and so forth, there's a 2044 job impact. So 2044 jobs were impacted by this development commitment. And of the $115 million commitment, it leverages up to almost $100 million more in that in secondary development. So there's a strong economic development component to it as well. The, since the inception of the trust, which is 2001, we have made $110 million in loans, and we have helped preserve or create 8,400 units of housing. So it's possible through your continued support and through our partners in the development community, such as the Y, that allows us to continue these works.
Thank you, Director Gladman. I want to share that this legislation is presented as emergency because of the need to continue the programs and services, as you mentioned, without any interruption. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, President Ginther.
I have one other piece of ordinance for consideration. I'd like to ask Councilmember Klein to present.
Thank you, President Protam, 789-2015. It's on page 10 of the agenda. I'd like to request the table until April 20th, 2015, and by a voice vote.
Harden.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes.
April 20th.
Turn the microphone back over to the President Protam for any final thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. I would like to share an announcement. Some exciting things happened last Thursday. The city held its annual Green Spotlight Awards, and as the Chair of the Environment Committee, this is such a coveted award and was presented to three Green Spot member organizations. Those awarded were small, medium, and large-sized businesses whose commitment demonstrates excellence in conserving and protecting water, reducing waste, greening their transportation, and informing and engaging their staff, clients, and customers. I'd like to take the time to personally applaud the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium, the Table, and Greenscoop for commitment to sustainable practices. Additionally, six businesses were recognized for completing Greenspot's Corporate Sustainability Initiative. This program provides mentoring and networking opportunities as businesses go through the Greenspot application process. This diverse group of businesses received their membership at the Greenspot Light Celebration, which include Boudros Rowland &amp; Row, Chase Bank, Franklin University, Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections, Whole Foods Market, Southern Ohio Correctional Facility. And finally, I'd like to note, the North Market and four of its merchants were also recognized for becoming Greenspots and promoting the use of reusable bags. Cat Singer's Little Deli, North Market Spices, Stoff's Coffee Roasters, and Taste of Belgium offered reusable bags to patrons in March, and we appreciate their engagement and participation in this. And when patrons bring back their bag during the month of April, which will start this week, you will receive a discount and/or a free item. So please patronize the North Market and these wonderful four merchants who are already promoting the reusable bags. Thank you very much. That's all I have tonight in announcements.
Thank you, President Protam Mills. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Council President Ginther, on the Administration Committee this evening, we have ordinance 0945-2015 to authorize indirect city council to enter into a contract with the Columbus City Schools for the Marion Franklin Opportunity Center, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $12,025.20 from the Jobs Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Marion Franklin Opportunity Center is a partnership between the Columbus City Schools and the Marion Franklin Civic Association. The center could not exist without the leadership and tenacity of Mr. Robert Patterson, Chair of the Marion Franklin Civic Association, and one of our great community leaders. The Opportunity Center is located in Berry Middle School at 2740 Lockburn Road, 43207, and the center provides educational opportunities for youth and adults, including GED classes, STNA classes, and job readiness programs. The classes are offered to create a safe, productive, and wholesome environment to empower the youth and young adults of the Marion, greater Marion Franklin community to become positive, creative citizens, and to help individuals reach their full potential through personal and professional development. I cannot say enough about our community leaders in this city and how they make this city a great place to work, live, and raise a family, and especially those like Mr. Robert Patterson. And I also want to appreciate my co-sponsors, President Ginther and Councilmember Harden. Would you like to make comments?
Thank you, Chair Paley. Just wanted to say that I think that this project is really an example of what happens when we come together and work together. This is a partnership between the Columbus Library, Columbus Public Schools, the Civic Association, Marion Franklin Civic Association, and now the City of Columbus to come in and support an area and community that is really working together. And so I'm excited to be a co-sponsor of this legislation and really proud, like you said, of the hard work that all of our community leaders are doing out there, especially Mr. Patterson down on the South Side. Thank you.
Council President Ginther.
I just want to thank you, Councilmember Paley and Councilmember Harden. Mr. Patterson's dream was always that there would be a branch of the library in Marion Franklin. Well, if you know Mr. Patterson, he's made a way out of no way and ended up partnering with the school district to create their own branch by using recently-retired buildings. So we're thrilled to partner with two outstanding organizations to make this happen. Thank you.
There are no further questions or comments? I move for passage, or Councilmember Mills, did you want to comment? Okay. I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Page, Paley, President Ginther.
That's all we have in administration. May I move on to Judiciary and Court Administration? And Judiciary and Court Administration this evening, we have ordinance 0812-2015 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $340,000 from the general fund to the specialty docket program and to declare an emergency. Of those that who know me, know that this is one of the programs that I'm very proud of, and that I believe, as I would say when it started, saves money and saves lives. And I'm also proud to have two of our judges from municipal court, Judge Ted Barrows and Judge Tyack, here to discuss this program. Judges.
Councilwoman Paley, President Ginther, members of council, thank you very much for this opportunity. This is, for most of you, this is nothing new. For those of you who are new to the program, I want to tell you how much we appreciate in the court the participation of the city, along with the county and other funders, to help us do this. And I was going to, I had my notes down here exactly what you said, that we're involved with saving lives, and our specialized dockets are a part of that. We recently, all five of our specialized dockets have been certified by the Supreme Court, which is going to hold us to higher standards than we've had in the past, and we look forward to being able to report to you in future years that we've met and exceeded those standards in every case. For those of you who may not be aware, there are five specialized dockets that we run in our court. I run one that's devoted to veterans of military service. Judge Scott Vanderkar, who's kind of like drove our specialized dockets years ago and got us started, runs one for alcohol and drug abuse program, and a subset of that, which is an opiate extension program that deals with heroin addicts and other opioids, and that may be the toughest nut to crack. Judge Paul Herbert, who could not be with us tonight, runs the CATS program, which deals with women who've been engaged in prostitution and who, as he's discovered and we've discovered, are many of them have been victims of human trafficking. So this is, we're saving their lives and turning them into productive citizens. We also have with us tonight Judge David Tyack, who runs our mental health program docket, and I'm going to offer him an opportunity to say a few words about that. Judge Tyack?
Thank you, Judge Barrows.
Council President Ginther, Chairperson Paley, members of council. Thank you all for your support of us, especially the specialized docket programs. We couldn't do it without you, and just to let you know what kind of impact this is having, I know that Chairperson Paley knows what we're doing down there, and with the certification, we have become a little bit more structured than before, which was part of the reason of the diversification and having other judges participate in this. But as a whole, I can let you know what kind of impact. I've been around the judicial system in Franklin County for more than 30 years, and I've seen the effect that these specialized dockets have had on the people that are involved in them and in the community as a whole. And it's benefiting so much everybody in the community that words just can't say enough. I'm currently presiding over the mental health specialized docket. I pretty much walked into a well-oiled machine that was operating perfectly well, and so I was fortunate to step into that position. And our staff is wonderful. We've had visitors from other cities come and are just amazed at what we can do, just wishing that they had the resources that we did with our staff and to be able to do it. So we couldn't do that without you. One word about Judge Herbert, who couldn't be with us. If you haven't heard, he is putting Columbus on the map as far as human trafficking awareness. He recently spoke at the State House, just got back from Washington, D.C. a couple of weeks ago, and other cities are modeling similar courts after his that he created. And again, that's because of your support for us, and on behalf of all the other judges that aren't here, thank you very much.
Just a couple other facts. I know when the specialty dockets first came to City Hall, we, they came in with some numbers that weren't statistics that we could possibly use because we didn't have specialty dockets at that time. But we had, City Council had faith in the system and went ahead and funded it. Now I can proudly say that I believe it's being funded out of the jail fund. So we're saving money from the jail, I just want people to know that. So people aren't in jail, we're resolving their problems and getting them out to pay taxes and child support and having jobs and moving our economy, which is what the specialty entity docket does. The other question that I have for you gentlemen, and I don't know the answer to this, I did go to the convention for specialty dockets in Columbus not too long ago, the education, and I, and the people from all over the state were coming here talking about us. How many states, how many cities besides us have five specialty dockets?
I don't think there are any that have five specialized dockets. And I want to amplify a little bit of what Judge Tyack said, and this is from Judge Herbert. He said, "CATS Court is currently being replicated in Dayton, Cleveland, Cincinnati, and in Franklin County Juvenile Court. Toledo seems to be next." They, that he is also working with Atlanta and Indiana to start human trafficking courts there. And he says that on April 21st, he's headed to Washington to meet with Attorney General Holder and the Department of Justice to tell them about what we're doing here in Columbus, and he ends it by saying so. Many, many thanks to Columbus City Council for our, for continued support.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Chair. You know, it's also a two-way street, because we can't do it without you, without having the willing participants that sit on the bench every day, that recognize the value, that do the legwork and do the hard work to make these dockets so successful in saving lives and saving community treasure. At the same time, having an experienced attorney like Councilmember Paley, who has been down at Muni Court for many years practicing and seeing the value of these specialty dockets, thank you for shepherding through this legislation and realizing the importance to the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. There's one thing I do want to say, this is voluntary. These judges don't choose, they don't have a reduction in their dockets. This is extra work for them, and it's meetings every single week. It's a lot of hard work. So yes, thank you, judges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Mills, hold on, judges, stay here for a minute.
Judge Barrows.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, I know that, as we talked about, this doesn't happen alone. I wanted to ask if you could share some names of some of the providers that provide some of the supports around individuals who go through the docket, that help provide that external support to the courts. I know that you've had the Veterans Administration onboard to help with the Veterans Docket. There's a couple other providers, if you could share some of those others who provide the external support.
Thank you, Council, Protam Mills. In the Veterans Specialized Docket, we of course have the Veterans Administration that's here every week, and one of the magic about our dockets is they provide services that don't cost the city or council anything, or our members, who, the ones that are qualified, will get those services for free. Also attending at the, at this, all of our staffings and attending all of our meetings of the Veterans Specialized Docket are representatives of the County Veteran Services Committee, Southeast Mental Health, and there's one other provider that I've lost right now. So we have access to that. One of the things that people have to do in order to get onto the docket is they have to sign a release of information. So essentially, if they are seeing private counselors or getting treated outside of the VA system, we also have access and consider those folks our partners as well. And I know that Judge Vanderkar, or Judge Herbert, has established connections with Amethyst that provides housing for these women when they first come out of jail, and a number of related counseling services through that. And I'll let you speak to the mental health court.
Okay, thank you. And Mary Haven is also.
That's right.
Utilized by Judge Herbert, working closely for some of these ladies. In the mental health docket, every week, we have representatives from most of the mental health treatment facilities around the city that come every week, and they have a number of people that are in the program that they keep involved with. There are other counselors involved with them, too. And these case managers, they're coming every week from like southeast and Columbus area, and they're, they've taken these people under their wings. And one more word about our staff, who are available all the time for these people to check in, and giving them guidance that way and keeping them on task is something that could never happen in our regular dockets if they were involved in that. So absent the specialized docket, especially in mental health, that is doing such a service to not only them but the whole community. And we do have a lot of crossover. Some people end up transferring from one of the drug courts into mental health if they have other issues identified. So we're all sort of working together that way, and there's just crossover all the time that we see between all of the specialized docket programs.
Thank you very much, and please send hello to Judge Herbert. I was talking to a group of young girls from Columbus School, girls, and one young lady was just dying to ask me a question, waving her hand feverishly, and her question was, "Do you know Judge Herbert?" I said, "Yes, I do." They were studying human trafficking and looking locally, and his name just came up in just about everything, and I think I got a couple extra points just by knowing. in just about everything and I think I got a couple extra points just by knowing Judge Herbert. So please send him my best and let him know that he is representing Columbus well and we really appreciate it.
Certainly will, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Again, I want to thank all the judges at the municipal court. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
And finally, in Judiciary and Court Administration, I have ordinance 0814-2015 to authorize and direct administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into a contract with ACS for monitoring services associated with continuous alcohol monitoring devices, to authorize the expenditure of up to $350,000 for monitoring services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
That's all we have this evening, Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. I wanted to make sure I introduced a new member of the Columbus City Council team, Jeff Ortega. Jeff, today is Jeff's first day. He's the Deputy Director of our Communications Office, so welcome Jeff and look forward to working with you. And then finally, I want to remind residents that City Council will be holding a community meeting tomorrow evening at Whitestone Community Center, 3923 North High Street. The meeting begins at 5:30 and will run until 7:00. It's the perfect opportunity for residents to meet one-on-one with council members and key members of the mayor's administration and discuss a variety of topics that affect their neighborhoods. If there's nothing else to come before council, I do know we have three non-agenda speakers. But if there's nothing else to come before council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers in just a few moments. Regular number, meeting number 17 will now come to order. Can I give a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are none.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there is none.
We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair that committee, all members serve on the committee. This evening in zoning, we have 0787-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3353.03, permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes for the property located 31 East Lane Avenue, permit a two-unit dwelling with a total of eight bedrooms in the C2 Commercial District and to repeal ordinance number 877-97 passed on April 21st, 1997. The applicant is Buckeye Real Estate, care of Don Plank, attorney, Plank Law Firm, 145 East Rich Street, third floor, Columbus, Ohio 43215. Proposed use is a two-unit dwelling with a total of eight bedrooms. The city department's recommendation is approval, University Area Commission recommended approval, Historic Resources Commission recommended approval, University Area Review Board recommended approval. Any questions or comments regarding this legislation? If not, first would move to amend is submitted to the clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
amended as submitted to the clerk. Next, I would move to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
amended to emergency and finally move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Passed. Next is 0800-2015 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.035 AR4, Apartment Residential District Use, 3356.03C4, permitted uses, 3312.13B driveway, 3312.49, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3333.15C, basis of computing area, 3333.22, maximum side yard required, 3333.24 rear yard, 3372.562A-B, landscaped area and treatment, 3372.563, maximum lot coverage, 3372.564A, parking, 3372.565 building line, 3372.566C, building separation and size, 3372.567, maximum floor area, 3372.568B, height, 3372.605D, building design standards of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 10 and 40 West 9th Avenue, 43201, to allow a mixed-use development with reduced development standards in the AR4 Apartment Residential and C4 Commercial Districts. The applicant is Buckeye Real Estate, care of Donald Plank, attorney, Plank Law Firm, 145 East Rich Street, third floor, Columbus, Ohio 43215. Proposed use is mixed-use development with ground floor residential uses in the C4 District and commercial parking in the AR4 District with reduced development standards. City Department's recommendation is approval, University Area Commission recommended approval, University Area Review Board recommended approval. Any questions or comments regarding this piece of legislation? If not, first I'd move to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
amended to emergency and finally I'd move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Passed. Is there anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Hart and Klein Mills, Paige Paley, President Ginther.
Stand adjourned.